Call me into order, prayer, Councilwoman Thompson.
In the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. We pray for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant us a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our residents, confidence in what is good and fitting. We're praying for the agenda set before us today. Please give us assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in Eddystone. Bless our small town of Eddystone and all the residents we call home. It is in your most blessed name we pray, amen.
Ms. Passantek, can we have roll call, please?
Councilperson Thompson, Patterson, Vice President Reed, Patterson, Grove, Dunhill, Mayor Reed, President Stewart.
Two quick announcements, a meeting of the Eddystone Civil Service Commission was held at 5:45 this evening. And at that meeting, the following actions were taken. This commission had reviewed and certified the results of both medical and psychological evaluations for Patrol Officers Coyle, Patrol Officer Gleam, and Patrol Officer Golden. We also reviewed and certified the results of the non-competitive oral interview with Edward Macheski to declare him certified for the position of Chief of Police. We also had an executive session at 6 o'clock this evening to discuss police staffing issues. For presentations, council may all entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Emma Truitt as the junior council member with a term ending June 2016.
I make a motion to appoint Emma Truitt as junior council member with a term ending June 2016.
I have a motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Judge Mallon, if you could administer the oath of office to Ms. Emma Truitt. And holding the Bible for her this evening will be her mother, Edna. Congratulations, Emma. At this time, I'll ask council to take action on the acceptance of the certification of the Civil Service Commission regarding the results of the medical and psychological evaluations for Patrol Officers Coyle, Gleam, and Golden.
I make a motion to accept the certification of the Civil Service Commission regarding the results of the medical and physiological evaluation of Patrol Officer Coyle, Gleam, and Golden.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'll ask council to take action on the appointment of Shane Coyle to the position of Patrol Officer for the Eddystone Police Department.
I make a motion to appoint Shane Coyle to the position of Patrol Officer for the Borough of Eddystone Police Department.
Second.
I have a motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Judge Turner, if you could administer the oath of office to Shane Coyle. And holding the Bible for him this evening will be his mother.
Raise your left hand and the Bible, raise your right hand. You read after me. Aye, Shane Coyle.
Aye, Shane Coyle.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The ordinance of the borough of Eddystone.
The ordinance of the borough of Eddystone.
Carry out the duties and responsibilities.
Carry out the duties and responsibilities.
Of a police officer.
Of a police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Shane, congratulations on your appointment. I don't often get to go outside the borough limits of Eddystone. However, I had the pleasure of having dinner one evening with a commissioner in Aston. And I bumped into Mr. Coyle and I said, "Oh, you're a patrol officer in Aston. I want to let you know we are getting ready to do a civil service examination for the Borough of Eddystone." Not only did you apply, but you were one of the top candidates. And when I did mention your name to our Borough Manager, Mr. Passantek, I said, he said, "Oh, he's my star quarterback." So, congratulations on your appointment and welcome to the Borough of Eddystone.
Thank you very much.
Council, at this time, I'll ask for us to take action on the appointment of Paul Gleam to the position of Patrol Officer for the Borough of Eddystone Police Department.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Paul Gleam to the position of Patrol Officer for the Eddystone Police Department. Second.
I have a motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Judge Turner, if you could administer the oath.
Sir.
Just like a court, you hate they're gonna stand, I know.
And holding the Bible for Paul this evening is his grandmother, Catherine.
Raise your left hand and the Bible, raise your right hand. You read after me. Aye, Paul Gleam.
Aye, Paul Gleam.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The ordinance of the Borough of Eddystone.
The ordinance of the Borough of Eddystone.
Carry out the duties and responsibilities.
To carry out the duties and responsibilities.
Of a police officer.
Police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Paul, when I joined, or when I was appointed President of Council in January this year, you know, a couple things that I had questions about, the answers always seemed to be, well, you know, if you want the answer to that question, you have to ask Bob Gleam. And what I've learned is, is that Bob Gleam has made a significant impact on this borough for many, many decades. And it is a pleasure to have you now appointed as a patrol officer with the Borough of Eddystone so that you can continue on and make your impact and leave your legacy with this borough. So, congratulations on your appointment this evening as a patrol officer for Eddystone. Council, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Michael Golden to the position of Patrol Officer for the Borough of Eddystone Police Department.
I make a motion to appoint Michael Golden to the position of Patrol Officer for the Eddystone Police Department.
Motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Judge Turner, if you could administer the oath of office to Mr. Golden.
Sure.
And holding the Bible for him this evening is his grandmother, Paulette.
President, if you can counsel, if I may.
Absolutely.
Raise your left hand and the Bible, please, raise your right hand. You read after me. Aye, Michael Golden.
Aye, Michael Golden.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The ordinance of the Borough of Eddystone.
The ordinance of the Borough of Eddystone.
Carry out the duties.
Carry out my duties.
And responsibilities.
And responsibilities.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
With fidelity.
Fidelity.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Now, Mr. President, just like in baseball, myself, Greg Mount, I'm a really good baseball fan. I look the furthest in the bullpen, I follow my comic pieces, my judge Greg Mount.
Michael, it was about two years ago, when I was the Chair of the Civil Service Commission, going through the civil service process, and you had applied for a full-time officer's job and the result was not so desirable. You took that particular hurdle and you could have made the decision, well, I'll go find somewhere else. But you continued your part-time employment here in Eddystone. You took all of the hours that were offered to you and you waited patiently for that second opportunity. And when that second opportunity came, you basically knocked it out of the park. You scored a perfect 100 on the written examination. You were the highest score on the oral evaluation. And you took your destiny and controlled it. And you were here this evening, and I am very proud to have you as a member of the Eddystone Police Department. And I will sleep safe at night knowing that you're here to protect us. So, congratulations. Those who attend council meetings regularly know that my bladder is about this high. So, this being the first meeting down in the fire hall, I would think my bladder would not be as cluttered. But you can see I'm already leaping through trying to find papers for the next action. Council, on the 28th of August 2014 at 10 o'clock in the morning, a meeting was held in Borough Council Chambers at Borough Hall. In attendance to this meeting were Edward Macheski, Mark Vasselli, who's the Chief of Police in the Ridley Park Borough Police Department, Charles Hallie, who is the Police Captain for Ridley Township's Police Department, and myself. The purpose of the meeting was to conduct an oral interview with Edward Macheski to certify him as qualified for the position of Chief of Police with the Borough of Eddystone Police Department. Both Captain Hallie and Chief Vasselli subjected Edward Macheski to questioning for over a 60-minute period of time. At the conclusion of their interview, both Captain Hallie and Chief Vasselli gave Edward Macheski a rating of highly qualified for the position of Chief of Police. Based on their expert opinion of these individuals, the Civil Service Commission of the Borough of Eddystone has certified Edward Macheski as being qualified to serve the Borough of Eddystone and our Police Department as Chief of Police. Borough Council, what I need at this time is a motion to accept the certification of the Civil Service Commission, which declares Edward Macheski qualified for the Chief of Police position.
I make a motion to accept the certification of the Civil Service Commission regarding the results of the non-competitive oral interview with Edward Macheski.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, council asks for a motion to appoint Edward Macheski to the position of Chief of Police for the Eddystone Police Department.
I make a motion to appoint Edward Macheski to the position of Chief of Police for the Borough of Eddystone.
Second.
Motion made in second, and Mr. Passantek, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilperson Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Reed.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Grove.
Yes.
Dunhill.
Yes.
President Stewart.
Yes. Motion carries, congratulations, Chief Macheski.
I just wanted to say a few words. I've known Eddie since the first day he became a police officer. And from that very first day, I knew he had a special flaw. Every day, every moment of work, he never let me down. He really is, from scale one to ten, and he will have that passage. Usually, I always was just because of the borough, so Eddie always worked for me. He asked me a long time, and he was thinking, you know, there's a chance I might become chief, and whatever do I wish to swear on, today I'll be honored with that. The reason why I'm here today, to keep him, so that's it.
Chief, I swear you will this evening is going to be your mother and your wife.
I, Edward Macheski.
I, Edward Macheski.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the ordinance of the Borough of Eddystone.
The ordinance of the Borough of Eddystone.
Carry out my duties and responsibilities.
Carry out my duties and responsibilities.
As Chief of Police.
As Chief of Police.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Councilman Patterson, you have a few words?
Yes. To Chief Macheski, Officers Gleam, Golden, and Coyle. Councilwoman Patterson was unable to make it tonight, because she really wanted to be here. And she wanted to congratulate all of you, so I said I would do that on her behalf.
And Chief, congratulations. I don't think September's too early for New Year's resolutions, but I have been calling you Acting Chief for so long that if I continue to call you Acting Chief, I do apologize in advance since you have served in that position for a little over two-year period of time. So, certainly, thank you for your services, the acting capacity. We have built a very good working relationship over the period of time. And we're continuing to, on the floor, to continuing to do some great things for here in the Borough of Eddystone. So, congratulations on your appointment. I do promise that by January 1, I will quit calling you Acting. I'm going to take a break, absolutely, I'm going to take a break. So, one of welcome, we had set out 70 chairs and we had an over-under that we would have enough chairs. But, once again, it's an overflowing crowd, so I thank everybody for attending. Those who live in Eddystone, who have not had an opportunity to see the hall. This is Joe Hughes in Memorial Hall. We'll have some information on our website of how you could rent it for birthday parties and anniversary weddings if they're coming up. Yes, for those that are outside of Eddystone, thank you for coming. Thank you for showing the support of our officers. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion for attendant recess. Public floor, and it is a school night, so I moved them up to number one. We've got Gabe Noel. Gabe is the, is it a Boy Scout or a Wee Bloke?
Oh, a Boy Scout.
Boy Scout. So, your project that you took, your community project, was to earn your Arrow of Light, which graduated you from being a Wee Bloke to a Boy Scout, correct?
Yeah.
Terrific. As some folks may remember, Gabe joined us in front of council several months ago. And Gabe is a Boy Scout for Troop, but I need you to turn on your shoulder. Oh, you're not tall enough. So, what's the troop number? 52, Troop 52. And Gabe took on a community project to earn his Arrow of Light. And his community project was to educate folks on the recycling. And we had asked Gabe to rejoin us several months after he started his project to give us an update. And I will turn the floor over to you. How'd we make out?
Um, we made out, I think, pretty good. I'm not sure how many people have gotten how many papers or stickers. But, um, that's something that I would have liked to, um, know. And also, during the Cowar Pie Bingo, I think I would like to, um, do a little handout of the stickers and papers.
Okay.
Absolutely. Journey, journey, Mrs. Grove is with the Ladies' Auxiliary, she can, she can help you.
Okay.
So, you've attended, you attended the Memorial Day festivities, correct? So, you had a little table set up and you could use stickers out on our Memorial Day festivities?
Yeah.
Have you done a lot of door-to-door?
Um, not too much. We've had a lot of vacations and I haven't had a lot of... Couldn't really find that much time to do it with, you know, sports. And now I'm at school, so it's going to be a little harder, but, I mean, I'm doing my best.
Well, I'll give you a quick update. Gene Scott is our Highway Superintendent. He is the gentleman that's in charge of doing all of the trash and recycle collection. So, when I do ask Gene, usually on a weekly basis, you know, give me an estimate of how many folks are participating in the recycling program. And his report to me is that every week, it seems as if we get anywhere from two to five more individual households that are participating in the recycling program. So, originally, it was taking him about three hours to go through the neighborhood and collect everything. He is now working, I believe, almost five hours. So, that's an indication to me that, you know, the recycling program is starting to grow significantly. Also, we had submitted, the middle part of August, a grant through the DEP. And in that grant, that grant was essentially an implementation grant to where the DEP receives grant applications from communities that are just beginning their recycling programs. And your story was actually part of the grant application. So, we did mention that we've got a Boy Scout in town that is going through the community, educating our residents on the recycling program. So, you know, certainly that helps Eddystone's chances of getting recognition through the DEP for our recycling program. So, we do appreciate, you know, your efforts in trying to educate our community. Department of Environmental Protection, I didn't know that people was entitled to the grant. I don't know what a Wee Bloke is, so... We all have our Wee Blokes. So, I appreciate you coming to council, I appreciate your continued involvement. Anything that we can do, your mom's got my phone number and my email address, certainly, reach out to me. If you need stickers, if you need more materials to hand out, certainly, we're here to help you and we appreciate your efforts. So, and council, any questions for Gabe?
No, he's done a great job.
Thank you for going.
He's up to good work, Gabe. Thank you. I'm sure mom's been...
No more vacations until Thanksgiving, okay?
I'm sure mom's been a big help to all women. I should thank mom, too, because she's been a big help. Good job.
Darlene Jones.
My question is...
If I could have your address, please?
South 50 Ashton Avenue.
Okay.
My questions are for Miss Thompson. Okay. I was advised by Christie Scanlon that you are the creator of Delco Youth Club. Is that correct?
Mrs. Jones, if you wanted to ask me about personal information, I will not disclose that at any public council meeting when we discuss borough business. If you have something to discuss about borough business, I'll be more than happy to discuss it.
Okay.
Otherwise, I will not answer personal questions.
Why do you remember, quite frankly, you sitting up there saying you want this borough to work together?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
No, it is still my...
You want all the residents to work together, who are safe in the borough and the children in the borough.
That's right, my duty has not changed.
Okay. This Delco Youth Club has the right to speak.
That's your opinion, but I will not discuss it.
It's not an opinion, it's a fact.
It's your opinion.
We have kids that don't know where to join basketball.
Well, then, it's your duty to educate them when they should join.
Okay. And also, I'd like to know where you got permission to have sign-ups at Eddystone Elementary School.
Again, you're asking me personal questions, I'm not going to be asking you personal questions.
Because I did not see it in July or all the school board meetings.
Again, I'm not doing personal questions, I'll be definitely...
Okay. Well, that's called about the record. You were the liaison, I believe, before Councilwoman Patterson took it over?
I was, I was staying record.
Okay. Do you have any records you can provide to us, the new record? We have nothing.
I have no records. When I turned, when I was removed from the record, we were staying, and I was removed. Everything was left there, I had no records.
Left where?
Left at the Lighthouse Hall.
Okay, because I approached Norm Quinn and Hope Quinn, both.
What kind of records would I have?
Any kind of, anything.
Well, I have no records.
Where are all the varsity, all the children? Wait a minute, where are all varsity, so the children?
Again, why are you asking, I do not know. I do not know.
You're the liaison, you're not responsible for...
And Ms. Jones, we're going to make a statement regarding the Delco Youth Club later in the meeting. You know, it is an organization that we're aware, council was aware of the creation of this. I have made several phone calls to Norm Quinn, who I have a poster that says he is the President and Chairman of the DYC. I've made several phone calls, left messages for both of them.
Let me guess, he didn't get back to you?
He has not gotten back to me as of yet. However, we do understand the importance of the youth programs that the Recreation Board sponsors. We're fully aware of the conflicts that this particular organization may present to the borough. And, you know, we're taking action as quickly as possible to make sure that... the borough, and, you know, we're taking action as quickly as possible to make sure that it is properly addressed.
Okay, because we have children that are signing up for the Delco Youth Club, and we have children signing up for the Eddiestone Recreation Basketball. Now we have other children that are saying, "My friends joined here. My friends joined here. Where do I go? What organization do I want to sign up for?" These kids are being put in the middle of this nonsense.
We're fully aware of the divide that this organization has created.
This is the divide in the town. Completely dividing the town. And someone needs to be held accountable for all these reports. I have nothing. We have nothing in the record. Where are the birth certificates? Where are all the clearances of the coaches and the volunteers? Where are the meeting minutes? Where are financial reports? Nothing. They have nothing to give us. Where are they?
Can I say something? I've been asking for financial reports for a year and haven't seen one yet.
That's a lie, Karen.
That's not a lie, Danielle.
It is a lie. The spreadsheets were handed in by her...
Did you get...
The spreadsheets?
There were sheets, but they weren't fully, it didn't say what the taken was.
You're not even involved in our board, Karen.
No, but I'm involved in finances. Okay, Danielle?
Okay, Karen.
So before it gets too out of hand, we are aware of the situation, and...
You're like, instead of trying to...
Excuse me, excuse me. We are aware of the situation. We are aware of the creation of this club, and, you know, as President of Borough Council, I've been taking the necessary steps to basically get to the bottom of the creation. And we will be, you know, making a statement later on in this meeting to address this particular organization.
Okay, what about records? Can anyone be held accountable for where these records are? I mean, parents, where are their children's birth certificates? Where are they? No one seems to have them.
Once, once again, you know, that's something that...
I never seen anything like this.
All I can do is, all I can do is ask the former folks that were in charge of the Recreation Board to turn over whatever, whatever information they have. You know, it would, I look at it as that this Delco Youth Club, they want to participate in the Chester Pike Rotary.
Yeah.
You know, in order to do that, it's very similar to the participation we've had in Del Bowlings before, to where you've got identification cards, you've got, you know, the need to present birth certificates to prove a child's age. If that information is already being submitted by this DYC group, then I'm gonna make the assumption that they are not being completely forthcoming with that documentation. In my opinion, if they collected that information as a representative of the rec board, and the rec board is an organization that is recognized by the Borough of Eddiestone, that when they collect that information, that information was the property of the Borough of Eddiestone and should be turned over. If they want to have copies of that information to make their transition to this new organization smoother, hey, by all means, make copies of it, however, don't withhold the information from the folks that are now going to be running the rec board organization. And these are questions that I will pose directly to Mr. Quinn, and, you know, I'll continue to make sure that, you know, they are following whatever rules they need to follow in order for the organization to exist.
Mr. President, I'd like to... Karen, you said she went punch me in the head?
I didn't say, I punched you in the head.
Yes, that's what you said.
You punched me in the head.
That's what you said. Thank you.
No, it's not what I said.
That's very professional, Karen. Thanks.
Can I just make a brief comment? That since the rec board is a function of the borough, and it's funded by the borough, all those records that were in the care of the people on the rec board are public records. So it's, it's not just a matter of who deserves to have them, or who collected them, or something. They're not private, anyone's private, personal property. They belong to the borough, and they belong to the people of the town of Eddiestone. And if those records have been removed or destroyed, I would, I would think that that's probably a violation of law. So you might speak to your new Chief of Police and find out what needs to be done in a situation like that, because we've had this problem with, in other areas as well.
Once again, Mr. Wilson, I don't have all of the details regarding the Delco Youth Club. However, I am taking the necessary steps to make sure that, you know, this, this information is gathered and that, you know, the questions are asked to the new President and Chairman. Sure.
Councilwoman Thompson, you said that you were removed. I just want to clarify, you were removed because you were on the rec board and you were the liaison and not...
I was removed at political reasons, Dave. For what reason?
Okay. I was just making a statement.
Danny Patterson.
This way, I'm gonna go this way for a second. I'm passing along a message from my son, who is currently serving in Afghanistan. Delco folks in town have been kind enough to send him care packages, and he wants to thank everyone. He recently received a case of PGC from Vickies, as well as a case of tasty cakes. It's served him well this week, as he's been training in a new position, working with the British troops, and he's got several meals stowed that kind of sustained him through some of his training. So, on behalf of my son, Dave and I both would like to thank everyone in town, and also Vickies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hello. I am a homeowner of Long Island Toll Street. My concern is with the park, I think, the school yard. I've had a lot of issues. I moved in this past December. I've had a few incidents where I've had to call the police, and they've been very helpful with me and let me know that it's okay for me to call them if I have any issues. But the sign in the park clearly states that the park is designed for children ages two to twelve with adult supervision. And even though there is police presence at night there of clearing out the park, all throughout the day, there's teenagers that are in the park. They also covered in kind of the corner of my, my street there. I understand there's a lot of kids in the borough, and there's not a whole lot of things for those kids all throughout the day to do, and, you know, I understand that, but they're throwing a lot of trash around, using Laffey language. My car was egged, and it's just an issue with, you know, it states that children two to twelve with adult supervision. There's a lot of kids on supervised of all ages out there all throughout the day, not just at night. And I don't feel comfortable having my children play there. So I just wanted to bring that up to the borough's attention.
I will, I will let you know that you're not the first individual that's bringing these concerns forward. I've been, see? It'll take long. Chief Lucheski has actually had some conversations with folks from the school regarding exactly what you have been describing, and, you know, he has assured me that there'd be some stepped-up police presence, and that, you know, we'll continue to move them along. Chief Lucheski, see? I did it right there? Chief Lucheski, anything to add?
Yeah, we're, we're only just told there are, there is a large influx of children that are locked for whatever reason, and we are going to increase the tolls and that is a possibility, but we're trying to cover the whole community at once. Not moving back there as much as we would like to, but we are moving them up, we're going to stop, is that the right of the full, full requirement to get so many stops here?
No, I just wanted to reinforce what you were saying, because I, you know, my children have personally, there's been some bullying issues, and the one kid was trying to force a small child to drink an unknown substance or something. So it's really serious. I just wanted to reinforce what you...
Change if you could, you know, continue to keep a closer eye, not only on the playground behind the, the school, but also the, the other playground facilities we have throughout the community, and I do hear a lot of complaints, and especially later, you know, right after curfew, the, the folks that are out of the corners that shouldn't be out in the corners, and, you know, making sure that, that our police forces being very active in moving folks indoors when they need to be indoors, and out of the areas that they do not belong in.
I didn't get your name, sorry. Sarah. Sarah, can I speak to you briefly?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Actually, the members of rec board were talking about having programs for Boro. It's still in the fall phase, but in the next few more seconds, we're gonna be able to do something.
It's comforting, really.
This is Dave Williams.
Evening, Dave. 1207 East Knight Street. I'm hearing reference to a serious bedbug problem, 1200 East Knight Street. I spoke to Mr. Dallas Waters about it, which he immediately took action on. I understand that they came, they exterminated six to eight units out of twenty-six. There's still a serious problem there. Last Sunday, it kind of grew from 1200 East Knight Street to 1204. As he had his furniture out in partnership, he was literally picking bedbugs off his mattress. So now 1204 will be infested. What's going to happen now is our police department, the frequent people in there, it's gonna get them, and take them to the police department, and then to Borough Hall. Same with our ambulance squad. They're going for a patient. Your ambulance, this place will be infested. Your son works there, your house is gonna get infested. Something has to be done in this place, and it's getting really bad over here. I thought three new tenants, they were saying it's really bad. I mean, Dallas did jump right on it. I understand it's $2,000 to $3,000 a unit.
Is Dallas going to...
Yeah, he's, yeah. I mean, he jumped right on it.
I heard the building was treated. Mr. Williams is complaining, but no one else's buildings have been treated has complained to me at all.
They, they, they've all called to me, they've been telling us.
I can't control that.
Yeah, I know.
I said, it was treated by Modern Exterminator, the borough actually used their buildings.
I understand.
Modern gave a report, gave a report, cleared all the units that were treated. He checked the common hallways, basement, you know, where the washer dryer and stuff like that, and since then, I've had no complaints. I'm actually going there tomorrow or Thursday for inspection of a unit, so I'll be in contact with the owner again.
They are, the tenants are complaining. They just won't, they're afraid, they say, that they're getting thrown out.
They don't have to put their name on there.
Yeah. They're afraid that the owner will throw them out?
Yeah.
Well, the owners, the owners gotta do something about it. I mean, yes. Yeah. What I understand, by talking to other exterminating companies, you just can't go in and do six-eight units from a price like that. It's a bit of a whole other thing, right? I mean, if you read into any of this online, even read, it says, they just keep going, keep going, keep going. And it's very expensive. I know people that have had it in their homes, it's $2,000 to $3,000 down your home, too. And that's not even guaranteed it's gonna work. I mean, this is just gonna keep getting worse and worse and worse if it doesn't get stopped.
Dallas, let me ask you this question.
There is no prevention, no?
Dallas, let me ask you this question, is, is that, you know, you, from an exterminator's standpoint, when you do have an infestation of bedbugs, you go in, you treat the unit. Is, is it a one-visit, treat the unit, the problem solved? Or, or are these exterminators recommending that they come back for a follow-up, just to make sure that they completely resolve the problem? And if that's the case, maybe we can reach out to Modern and say, "Listen, you know, can you come back and re-inspect those units that you had previously treated," or actually require the, the owner to do that? He, when I got notified from, from Gabe, that he had to use the exterminator, which he did. I also told him I had a copy of the report from the exterminator, so I have him follow up with the chief, the exterminator, saying, "Clear the units that were dumped." Be clear of this. Yep. I'll be in contact with the owner tomorrow or Thursday, and we're gonna inspection of other units in there. And, you know, I... Are you within your rights to ask for a re-inspection of those units, so that... Oh, yeah. We hold the hammer. Yeah.
Because I'm reading 1204, you just...
I don't know, I know that bedbugs are like microscopic, I mean, I don't know, it's physically... But, yeah, we hold the hammer. But, I mean, if the freshman goes in and says, "Hey, it's clear," our hands are basically tapped. I, I would agree, I would agree with that, but however...
Are you talking about the same bugs? If you say these bugs are big, you're saying they're big bugs, right?
No, they're big bugs, they're tiny, they're very, they're very...
Yeah, they're real little.
I'd say if it's 1200, now it's gonna be 1204, and it's just, they're running up the line.
So you're following up with the owner tomorrow? Yeah, tomorrow or Thursday, I have an inspection in there, so I will follow up before I even actually link it. That's, that is my biggest fear also, but I don't want to take...
You don't want to do it. They're not very close. Actually, the owner, they were working yesterday with a big nomad stood on, man, I heard a guy...
He wasn't here.
Don't, yeah, they carry them in school. They carry them in school.
They, I know, that's the time when you get online, read about this. It's an epidemic business.
I know. Just like that.
Everywhere.
Dallas, can you follow up with the owner tomorrow and bring us a report for our next council meeting?
Thank you.
Okay, Dallas will follow up with the owner this week, and he's gonna bring us a report by the next council meeting. Any other, last call for public forum, anybody with public forum?
Right here.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to address one issue, because I use 291 there at the bus stop, it's been to my job. Well, I want to know what the borough is gonna do for everybody. They are not obeying their scientists, no left turn. Every day for the last five six weeks, we're wrong, and it's been ongoing. They are not paying attention to the signs. The one on the traffic lights is no left turn. The one at the corner right on the bus stop, no left turn. It's been like, every hour of the car, no left turn, not to go into gas station, we're coming up those...
So you're looking at 291 heading northbound, making a left onto Seville?
Yeah.
Okay. And you're, you're absolutely right, it is posted, and the reason why it's posted is because there was a high accident rate there.
I think we're getting more, it's gonna come posted, because about two or three days ago, I was in near mess, my truck was far in trouble. Cars...
Chief Lucheski, if you could just have your officer to be on a heightened alert for some left turn movements. The other thing that I typically see is, is the folks will see the no-left turn, and they will make the right onto Seville, and then they will bang a U-turn right there at Four Street, which, it's also signed, no U-turn. So with that being said, if, you know, ignoring the force of no control, make sure that they're all ready to alert and move. The legal left turn movement by northbound, 291 onto Seville, as well as the U-turn movement on Seville at Four Street.
Yeah, we just finished our aggressive driving, we were all aggressive driving from the same intersection where Dallas locked 291, and we're there a lot the last thirty-eight minutes.
No other public forum? Action items, Mr. President, take command of the treasurer's report, please.
Mr. President, I've got this first, we're dealing with 217, 800, 217,825.58. We had excess of revenues over expenses in an amount of 434,008.51. We had payroll expenses of 90,645. Thus, leading us to the end balance for the month of August of 2014 of 561,188.63.
Council, you've heard the treasurer's report for the month ending 31, 2014. What's your pleasure?
To make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as random, make it part of permanent minutes.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. This is where we miss Despo the most. Cash receipts in the Sportsman's Journal.
I'll make a motion that all bills be paid, and all cash deposited, once signed off by the, through the chairs.
Second. As a motion made in second, for cash receipts in the Sportsman's Journal, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Code enforcement report.
Mr. President, in August, code enforcement conducted seventeen inspections, issued nineteen work stop orders or violations or citations, issued twenty-four work permits, and issued sixteen licenses. The code enforcement department collected fees in an amount of 18,126.8 in August.
Council, you've heard the code enforcement report for the month ending 31st August 2014. What's your pleasure?
To make a motion to accept the code enforcement report in August, make part of permanent minutes.
As a motion in second for the acceptance of the code report, report, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Police report.
Mr. President, the Eddiestone Police had 439 calls for service in August. They issued a... They issued a hundred and thirty-four citations. They had seven accidents they responded to. There were twenty-four thefts reported. The police department issued twenty-six parking citations and made twenty-two criminal arrests in August together.
Counsel, you've heard the monthly police report for August, 2014. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the police report as written, make it part of permanent minutes.
I have a motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Fire report.
Mr. President, the Eddie Stone Fire Company responded to nine alarms in the month of August, six by night, three by day. They had a total, members responding to those alarms, eighty-eight, which is average nine point seven seven percent per alarm. And the chief reports that fire prevention is August 5th through the 11th. The fire company's working on setting up dates and times with the school and they'll also have the 12th District Fire Prevention Trailer available for that event.
Counsel, you've heard the fire report for the month of August. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept the fire report as written, make it part of permanent minutes.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Mayor, with your involvement in the fire department, I do understand they've got a flea market that's scheduled?
Yes.
Do you know the date? I knew it was on the spot.
Yeah, October 11th.
October 11th? I didn't see you back there, Chief Walsh.
We've got Traver Shop.
That's an indoor/outdoor venue, correct? What are you opening up the engine base? Are you still looking for vendors?
We are.
What's the cost for a table?
Indoor, $25, outdoor, $20. Time to be going up this week.
Now, would they contact, I think there's something on your website, is there not?
Yes, there is. I call the fire admin number, follow this, I'm living here, these people must have been called or the chief's web mail, chiefswalsh@rscam.com.
Is there a theme or anything for what you're looking for, the tables, collectibles and seats or you pay your money, you set up your table and good luck?
Bowl clean out.
Bowl clean out. So that's the 11th of October, what time?
I am at 3:00.
And we will be launching the eddystoneborough.org website this week. And if you don't mind, and I'm sure you don't, I'll kind of cut and paste the information off of your website and make sure that you've got that information going on on our website as well. If you're very lucky. Chief Lucheski, if I could give a couple of words from you regarding the discussions with Vinnie and Dodge for the lease purchase of the new Charger and the trade-in of the 2001 Crown Victorian?
These agreements were made the same as we discussed prior, counsel. However, I can get an estimate of the whole code enforcement vehicle, sixteen hundred dollar trade-in, which is matchable to Kelly Blue Book, trade in for that vehicle. I recommend the council of giving approval to trade that vehicle right now. Still, we're going to come with these...
Mayor, I recall having an inspection with you. One of the cruisers, the Crown Victorian Police Cruisers have a little spot of paint that is peeling off the hood.
Right. And you want to swap the hoods for the 2001...
Is that something that you, have you gone to either guise collision or tell or insignia to look at pricing?
Yeah, I'm sure you can do that.
Actually, in preparation, I spoke to Taylor, she learned, they said they are looking to do that. And Dallas, we're going to see the next part line, we'll need to have these parts in the 21.
Does you have a 21 of our creation?
I do, really.
Dallas, do you have an objection to seeing the receiving part 21?
We're going to need first to wet the game. Compared to the card Dallas, that's where it's cleaned up. You're awake over there, huh?
Am I right in saying card 21, where are you? That used to be the TV show, correct?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
Or fifty-four?
Teenage, fifty-four.
I'm too young. I'm too young.
My mother told me.
So counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the trade-in of police vehicle 23XX, which does not have a number, which is currently our code enforcement car, which is a 2001 Crown Victorian. It does have 105,000 miles on it and make that part of the lease agreement with the new police cruiser that we are purchasing from Vinnie and Dodge. And I will confirm that when the chief and I first had the initial conversation, I was looking at Kelly Blue Book and I said, they're offering you $1,575. And he said, how'd you know that? I said, because that's the trade-in value on the Blue Book. So I will undertake a motion for giving the chief permission to trade the vehicle in as part of the lease purchase. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Chief, proceed accordingly. Mr. Presente, can you present the MMO for the police pension, please?
Every September, the council's required to vote on a minimum municipal obligation for the police pension plan. Eddie Stone Borough employs Thomas Anderson and Associates who are actuaries to do the calculations and manage the plan along with INR, who's a benefits manager. So tonight, we would ask for a motion to be made by council to approve the minimal municipal obligation for the police pension, the MMO as referred to, in an amount of $267,165. And if that's so approved, I will submit the necessary paperwork to the plan administrator.
So counsel, at this time, I'll ask for a motion for counsel to approve the municipal, minimum municipal obligation for 2015 in the amount of $267,165.
I'll make a motion to approve, to adopt the MMO for the police pension program in the amount of $267,165.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Councilman Patterson, can you give us an update on the Young Lungs at Play policy, which bans smoking in all playgrounds and parks? Now, that's a program, right? Just to be correct, it's not a policy, it's a program?
Six forty-five. Yes. The Young Lungs at Play has been publicly in the news with public and it's ready to be adopted. I'd love to move forward with adopting ordinance 645.
Counsel, at this time, I'll undertake a motion for the adoption of ordinance 645, which is the adoption of the Young Lungs at Play program, which bans smoking in all playgrounds and parks. I want a motion first. Make a motion first. Maybe do a motion better.
To a motion to adopt the Young Lungs at Play policy, ban smoking in all playgrounds and parks?
Motion from Councilwoman Gross.
Ordinance 264...
645. Motion from Councilwoman Gross would have a second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Patterson, one.
Yeah.
Motion voted in second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
I should help with the...
Counsel, I'm in receipt of a letter dated 25th of August, 2014. The Eddie Stone Council, I, Norman Quinn, resign my position on the Eddie Stone Recreation Board. It was my pleasure serving the children of Eddie Stone for around ten years. At this time, I will ask for a motion to accept the resignation of Norman Quinn from the Recreation Board. I need a motion.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Norman Quinn from the Recreation Board.
Second.
I have a motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Can I have a roll call for this?
Councilperson Thompson?
Aye.
Vice President Reeves?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Dunningham?
Aye.
President Stewart?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Second, I've got a letter dated 25th of August, 2014. It reads, Eddie Stone Council, I vote Quinn, resign my position on the Eddie Stone Recreation Board. I enjoyed serving the children of Eddie Stone. Thank you, Hope Quinn. At this time, I'll undertake a motion to accept the resignation of Hope Quinn from the Recreation Board.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Hope Quinn from the Recreation Board.
Second.
Motion made in second. And Mr. Presente, can I have a roll call on it, please?
Councilperson Thompson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Yes.
Patterson?
Aye.
Gross?
Yes.
Dunningham?
Aye.
President Stewart?
Aye.
The motion carries 6-0.
Counsel, I'm in receipt of a letter dated August 25th, 2014, which reads, Eddie Stone Council, I, Christine Cocker, am resigning my position on the Eddie Stone Recreation Board. Had a good time working with the children. Thank you, Christine Cocker. At this time, I'll accept the motion to accept the resignation, Christine Cocker, from the REC Board.
I make a motion to accept the resignation, Christine Cocker, from the REC Board.
I have a motion made in second. Can I have a roll call with Mr. Presente?
Councilperson Thompson?
Aye.
Vice President Reeves?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yep.
Gross?
Yes.
Dunningham?
Yes.
President Stewart?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
These resignations from the Recreation Board come at a very precarious time considering the fact that this time of the year, the Eddie Stone Recreation Board is typically gearing up for basketball season. So it's very important for the continued successful operation of the REC Board that we name new members as quickly as possible.